All right, I'll bring the supervisor back to opening ceremony.
Mr. Egan, why don't you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the revival of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with the ruling justice for all.
Remain standing for the invitation. Almighty God, we pray this day for your ever enduring guidance. We ask you to focus in wisdom and fortitude that we may dispense our knowledge and facts[41.73][41.73]intelligently among all humanity of whom we serve. Amen. All right, begin we'll have announcement about discussing the session. No reportable action. And now I'm looking for agenda approval addition or deletion. Whoa. I think I heard Mr. Alba there first. Do I got a second? Mr. Hamper seconds. All in favor? Opposed? All right, public comment. Got no public comment card? No public comment. We'll move on to unagendaized reports by board members. We'll start with Mr. Alba this time.
Well, good morning, everyone. I don't have much other than May the 6th. Basically, by the teleconference for most everybody is going to be the big rally, the advisory council, perhaps on the groundwater. The meeting's going to be open through the committee or the meeting in person. Other than that, anybody else can go in through Zoom. You'll have to go to the website to figure out how to do all that stuff. Don't ask me, I think you're not smart enough to know how to do any of that stuff. Anyway, that's what it's going to be. We're going to give it a try and see what happens. It's going to be pretty well set up. I think they've got it all figured out. That's the important part. But anyway, that's going to be on the 6th. Other than that, I don't know.
Mr. Gallagher?
I went to a Zoom meeting the other day of the Lassen Volcanic Byway Partnership. And so all the counties that are involved in that are trying to get a plan together once all this is over so we can get our economic development for, you know, visitorship into those counties going once again. I know everybody's worried about that, but I think we'll get that back here pretty quickly and start with the plan for that. That's all I have.
Mr. Hamper? Mr. Hamper?
I participated Saturday in the little truck rally we had about sixty bigs, twelve counties with American flags showing support for just getting back and moving this country along here. And it was pretty good deal. Everybody socially distanced themselves and it was pretty cool to see all the American flags out and the patriotism.
Well, and as always, I tend to defeat the COVID. It's going to come down to individuals practicing the social distancing. It won't be a law that makes it happen. It would be the individuals practicing self reliance like we've done in the past. All right, with that, we will move on to the consent calendar.
I'd like a full G2, please.
All right, so shall we pass the minutes then? I'm looking for motion. Oh. Madam Clerk?
G1, I need to put G1, I have an incorrect last name, we should stop.
Oh, I did that, I think. Okay. Okay, so I'm looking for motion to pass the minutes with the correction the clerk mentioned.
So moves.
Hamper moves.
Second.
Gallagher seconds. Public comment. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, then shall we take up G2?
Yeah, I thought.
Richard, if you could explain kind of what's going on with the emergency and some of the recent events.
Sure. Chief relaxes up in the audience as well. The action that we're requesting today is to review both proclamation of local emergency and a local health emergency issued by Dr. Korver for the purpose of, there's some ambiguity as to whether and under what timeframe those emergencies need to be continued. And so for the sake of being conservative and making sure that we've done so, we're recommending that you continue those emergencies in place on a frequent basis. The question is whether it's thirty days or sixty days as far as the requirement. So Mr. Ross may have further comments on that, but the action is to review the state of emergency and continue it in place until it's canceled.
Silas?
I think Richard answered why it's on the agenda. Do you have a specific question other than that if you could answer?
Where are we with the cases in the county and what is the health officer doing today?
Today, the health officer is actually at the public health department and he's reviewing a draft plan that's going to be submitted to the state for reopening Lassen County.
Can you kind of escalate the timeframe on that?
Time being sent? I imagine it's going to be sent by the end of this week. I don't know for sure. Dr. Korver's going to review it. There's no guarantee he's going to sign it. So we'll go after this morning. The timeframe for opening up the county, I think, all, everyone involved with the response understands the economic impact that not being open has had on the county. And I think we are all very eager to open back up. We just want to make sure that it's in a manner that doesn't cause further harm. And so I think we're much more sensitive to the needs of Lassen County than the governor is to get a visitor. And we think it's very important to get us back open, but we also have a concern for what the future might hold. So we just want to make sure that it's intelligent and helpful.
So we decided to open up Silas and we still have all staff in place for any kind of emergencies such as COVID being diagnosed in Lassen County. So your thoughts on opening? Are we going to graduate it? We're going to fling it open? What are we going to do?
You know, it's not like to me, it's not just one person, but what we're working towards is a phase opening and providing guidance and as much support as possible to the retailers and barber shops and nail salons, it doesn't matter, so that they can, so that they can open in a manner that's economically feasible for them, but still provide some level of safety or as much as possible to their patrons and their employees and the owners. We don't, unfortunately, we don't have all the answers. You know, we just don't. And so we're doing the best we can with the guidance given to us from the state, what we're observing throughout the nation, and then collectively what Republic Health Department and Sheriff's Office and myself, you know, the entire county. We're trying to make the plan that's going to work for everyone. And I know that's not going to be make everybody happy, but unfortunately, we're still bound by the state's order. And so he may get a chance to review what we're doing and make a decision whether we're going to relax that order or not, or we can't make our order less restrictive.
And if I might add to that, that the bulk of the work on the plan for reopening has been done and is ready to go. The significant hurdle that we face is getting the state health officer and the governor both to allow implementation of the plan that's been drafted, which is less restrictive than what the current state health order is. So that's the main hurdle and that's the essence of Dr. Korver's letter to the governor and the state health officer, hopefully it's law today or tomorrow.
So there's similar letters being sent by six other counties?
More than six others. There's a group of six counties in the valley area that together are making such an effort. There's also other counties throughout the state that are doing things independently.
Well, I want to say that I really appreciate the effort that staff has put forth during this entire time. Also, the work that the people in Lassen County has done, I think, has been incredible. You know, following the order, staying home when needed. And it shows that we've done the right thing since we have zero cases here, but we do need to get back open. Richard, is there any way that we can emphasize the letter that Korver is doing by having a letter of our own, maybe directing you to send a letter that is similar to that of Korver's to the governor and just say, we need a plan? We have a plan. We have zero cases and let's start to get that opened up.
Happy to draft such a letter for my signature or the chairman of all powers of the board.
Before we give direction though, do we want to open public comment for undecided first by control? Thank you, Silas, by the way.
Do you have a question?
And I did have a question for you, Silas. So the county's plan and vision is allowing non-essential businesses to open as long as they can practice social distancing and meet what guidelines?
Yeah, so that's what we're moving forward to just instead of necessarily saying, you know, the non-essentials, they can't be open, it's going to be, hey, you can open and just maintain six foot of distance for whatever that is. And I don't, I don't need to have a plan in front of me, but it'd be, perhaps you limit the occupancy of your store to only ten people at a time. I don't know what that looks like.
So we have a working group, you know, we've got schools involved and other people. And, you know, some of the businesses, they can't maintain social distancing. So Silas and other people are researching, you know, some other mitigation measures like for hair salons and those things. We've got pretty good guidance. So the primary business that are closed right now are retailers. And the retailers, we see what every home is open, retailers are building, that's what everyone else is going to do. So the retail side, there's pretty good plans. So what have we got? Retail?
Close contact.
Yeah, close contact.
Large gatherings, movie theaters, churches and what?
Those are going to be more challenging. Those are going to be further down the list.
Restaurant lounges.
Restaurants, yeah, we put a lot of work into those too with environmental help. And I think there's some options available there that are, or there are options that we're including in the plan. So what we're trying to do is draft, you know, guidelines for those different types of businesses and get those out to them in the near future, saying, hey, we're submitting a plan to the state health officer and the governor. And if they loosen it up, see what it's going to look like. So they can be prepared right now or be prepared and ask, you know, if they have any questions, kind of reach out to us. But the main thing we want to do is put together, Mike said, I said, you know, want to be responsible, but we also want to, want to put together a comprehensive plan that's likely to get, you know, approval. What we need to do, we need the governor and the state health officer to retract or modify their orders and return that authority back to the each county. Each county is different, you know, and so that's what we're shooting for right now. We really want to have a plan that's going to keep community safe, but also is going to be, you know, appreciated at that level to help us. And that's what most of the counties are working on right now with these plans to try to convince the state because we need, like Richard said, we need to back off and return the authority back to the health officer who can afford it. And there are, and part of the plan, it does have trigger points for additional response and closure in the future of fit and indicate, but right now I need really need to get some of these non-essential businesses open, so.
Well, and their non-essential businesses, one aspect, but they're very essential to the people who are closed.
Right.
So we have to get those people open quickly, as quickly as we can.
And I think, you know, some of the larger stores in town that are caught, they're closed. They could, you know, they could stay open or they couldn't possibly, they opened the corporate if they made that decision. So we're planning on trying to reach out to them and say, hey, you can open. If we get that to that point of, hey, you're good to open, it's up to you, and try to incur that when we get to that. I think the other thing that maybe not necessarily is, but worth mentioning, if we made a request, was late last week or yesterday, late last week, for a state ran testing site here in Lassen County. And that's of no cost to us other than having a facility available to them and the staff that can perform the testing. And if that does happen, I think it's a very slim chance it happens, that'll be a symptomatic thing when we want to test it, to get tested. We're just awaiting that. We're trying to get us in a spot where we can function again, but just not always up to us.
All right, any other questions, Congress? We can always break them down. So I was going to open it up to public comment. Anybody want to speak on the side? You got to stand forward and say your name for the clerk.
Go to the podium, please. Hello. My name's Scott McCullough. I work for the Lassen College Foundation and I operate and manage Eagle Lake, committed campgrounds in Marina. And I came to the meeting just to find out where we're at because I'm getting five, ten, fifteen emails or calls a day, does Eagle Lake going to be open? It appears to me that we're, and I agree with everything that started this pandemic and we, you know, the ball was make sure our health facilities are not overrun, but that's, that's gone. Where we're at now, it appears to me is we're at, no one can get the COVID-19 virus. Well, and we're going to shut businesses until we can get enough tests to make sure that if one person has it, that they're not going to spread it throughout the community. Anyway, I'm here to advocate for, or to request that you advocate up to the government and to the relevant government officials, health directors or whatever, to allow us to open. Camping, recreating, has been stated that, even Dr. Korver's letter, oh, we can recreate as long as we're doing it, but we don't want those other people coming through the county. I watch and I've been seeing the snowbirds coming through the county during this entire pandemic. And Lassen County's still not having a case, thank God, is, shows that we as a community and everyone in that I have witnessed, even those up at Eagle Lake now, I counted over forty family units Saturday and Sunday that were picnicking, recreating, and a lot of them without kids and even four were in place. So they're coming already. Especially, I would think, these are people mostly maybe that had second homes in Spalding area or whatever, but we're still coming up and checking. And the people that waved at me, who know me, or saw that I was working there around the marina, taking the boards off the windows and starting to prep up. When they approached, I observed what was going on. No one gets within ten feet. We're social distancing now. And camping and fishing, to me, is social distancing personified. The National Recreation Reservation Service that we work with through the U.S. Forest Service have put out guidelines for different recreating small businesses, small stores, what you need to do for that, and we're incorporating that. Yep, we're allowed to open. We will incorporate that. The campgrounds themselves, we've got flyers, we're printing them up that we'd be able to hand to anyone that enters or will set up a stand and say, take one or whatever. But as of today, I still have one hundred and sixty-one reservations on the books for Memorial Day. Prior to, to Memorial Day, if we have to start refunding them, we'll refund them. In the end, what that's going to hurt is the scholarship funding at Lassen Community College because that's where our net revenue goes. I think we have a plan. The group dynamics for the camping is going to be a stretch for us because even our group sites have been reserved for Memorial Day. And how we will work with that, in my opinion, is we'll just address them anyway and say, hey, anyone that's feeling sick, you know, the entire dynamic that we've got. But we are social distancing now. And I hate to see us continue to go down this road to where did it end? I mean, no one can get the COVID. Well, that's not going to happen. Some point in time, we're just going to go through the community, I believe. But anyway, that's my piece. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? So gentlemen, I think we gave direction to staff that we wish for a letter to open the trail.
Well, I just got a question. I'm going to throw this out there is, you know, I know we're talking about doing this and I'm sure some of our neighboring counties are as well, and we're small, we're old, don't have much of an influence. Even though we're going to, you know, have to write our letter for us, would it also be in our best interest to be a good neighbor and maybe write a letter of support as well to, you know, the governor? If you know Modoc's going to be writing letters, you know, to support.
Modoc's endeavor.
Plumin's endeavor. I mean, maybe someone along the valley, they're, they're not more like us, but you know, it's, to me, put a little bit more pressure on them.
I think that's a fine idea, but probably something that should be considered by the board individually, that some of those counties may not be acting in the way we are.
They may not, but I'm understanding, we, 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 be a good neighbor and help out some of our fellow counties, maybe they'd be willing to help us out too.
Maybe perhaps a more of a generic support to counties to plan to reopen rather than endorsing a specific plan, but supporting their concept of reopening and some of that without commenting on their individual plan.
You know, especially those counties that are involved in tourism like we are. We, we even have that many other counties like Shasta especially, you know, that's their, kind of their bread and butter during this summer as well. Modoc, any of the, assist you, all those that are really involved in tourism, I think that's important.
And so what I hear is that we have direction to staff to write a letter to the governor considering our county's plan for reopening and to allow for it by loosening those restrictions, if not on the state, then on our county. Does that seem reasonable, gentlemen?
Allowing, allowing the counties to take that control.
Right. Well, other, other counties report, but in this county, we'd like them to allow for Lassen County to be determined about Lassen County's restrictions. Excellent.
Motion we prefer G2.
Second.
Mr. Gallagher moves. Thank you for reminding me. Mr. Hamper seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. H1, discussion about county revenue sources. This one? Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, you asked that we agendaize an item to discuss potential new or augmented revenue sources for the county for obvious reasons. I think we're continuing to face financial difficulty compounded by this recent COVID issue, but certainly not, not new. These are longstanding issues that do need to be addressed, I think. And so it kind of outlines some, you know, some recent actions by the board that we've done with perhaps some ideas to discuss for the next fiscal years to come. And I'm not sure exactly where you.
I brought this up in part because my question is, before the COVID emergency, we faced the threat of, in essence, the biggest threat was the unfunded employment liability. And it seems to me that while the COVID emergency in part is funded through state federal means, that that problem, the unfunded employment liability remains. And so I'm glad that you wrote down the measures that we've been taking in order to find new revenue because it's been my sense so the last three and a half years that the problem facing the county is that the revenues coming in are not sufficient to cover expenses that we've obligated ourselves on. And so, and that problem is not getting better. I believe that problem is getting worse. And unless this report, so my question would be, are our incoming revenues sufficient to cover our outgoing expenses and does that hold true going forward?
A question that doesn't really lend itself to a yes or no answer, but a more of an depends answer, you know? And we, you know, we hear a lot of rhetoric from different jurisdictions and different people that, you know, this city or that county is going to, you know, go broke or bankrupt or go out of business. And that's just not the reality when it comes to local government. What, what occurs is there are decision points where there is a recurring source of revenue for every jurisdiction in the state and probably in the country, and, but it's a limited resource. And so decisions need to be made as to where those resources are going to be allocated, what services are going to be provided. And so in my view at least, you know, it's not a decision of are we going to be able to do this or not? The decision is what services are we going to provide? Because there's never, ever been enough money to do everything we wanted. And I don't think, regardless of what's done, there's never going to be enough money to do all the things in life. So we are facing a situation where I believe that we need to decide which services we need to stop doing or we do this because we're, we're in that fiscal condition and that almost definitively, and I don't like sands, but it almost definitively requires reductions in services and therefore reductions in employees and expenditures. So I, I think that's where we're at. I, I appreciate the argument of making a bigger pie and adding more resources. We, for a lot of reasons, we haven't experienced that in the county for a long, long time. The pie just doesn't grow faster than the expenses. Largely due, I think, to global and federal policies that we're no longer going to utilize our natural resources, we're no longer going to capitalize on our natural resources, we're going to restrict things. And these are not county impositions, state and federal impositions that we're not going to utilize to the best benefit of, at least economically, the resources that we have. Although, you know, this board has, in force before, tried and continue to try to change that dynamic, it just hasn't changed. So, you know, there's a couple of alternatives to reducing services. We've tried some of them. I think maybe they're worth trying again in terms of tax measures locally that could go to fund local government, not state and federal government.
A tax measure would be an increase in revenue.
Right.
And, but you're suggesting that, so that would increase the pot, you're suggesting a, a tax measure?
I'm suggesting that one method of increasing the county's ability to provide services would be a tax measure to increase revenue.
But also, from what I hear, you're suggesting that this discussion should have been, or perhaps could be more useful if it's a discussion of those services that the county can no longer afford.
Yeah. And, you know, like I started to say, you can pick any particular service out of the mix and we can afford to do that one service. But from a comprehensive perspective, moving forward without increasing or augmenting revenues in some fashion, I don't believe we can continue to provide the same level of service that we have been providing.
So how would we go about that discussion?
Well, and it's not a new discussion. This is the discussion we have annually at budget time. And it may be more acute this year than it has been in the past, but I think that's the most appropriate venue to discuss the level of services, services that will be provided.
So going forward, I mean, then we had this discussion when we approved the CAO's recommended budget. And so at this point, what you're telling us is that we have enough revenue coming in to support those services that we budgeted for for this year.
Yeah, so just to put it in context, the budget that we're operating in now is the nineteen twenty budget, which was adopted last, late last summer based on the revenue projections that we had at that time. And those revenue projections at mid-year were perfectly aligned with what we projected as were expenses. So, and then, you know, since the mid-year of the year, since the middle of the year, So, and then, you know, since the mid-year of the year, since the middle of the year, we've had a lot of, a lot of things happen in terms of revenues that we haven't fully realized yet in terms of sales tax and other revenues. I expect that they're gonna be lower than we projected, at least for a percentage of the year, for probably around a quarter of the year. We're in the process of, of looking at those numbers, um, daily to try to understand and we'll bring it to the board as soon as we have cause to do so, if they're drastically different. Well, large revenues, PIL being reported in, I don't think will be affected by COVID. Property tax, I don't see being affected by COVID for this fiscal year. Let me preface all of the statements by saying that for the duration of this fiscal year, I don't see property tax being affected significantly. I don't see PIL being affected significantly. And then those are major revenues this time of year. I, I do see sales tax being affected significantly in the sense that, uh, we're dependent heavily on fuel sales, fuel quantity and price have gone down significantly and that will affect our, our revenues for the duration of the year and maybe more significantly during next year. There are also several funding streams. Public safety realignment comes to mind and some others which are, uh, derivative of statewide sales tax. So they're, they're based on statewide sales tax receipts and I think those will also be reduced. We're, I've asked departments informally to, uh, for the duration of the year, to restrict any, not that there are a lot of discretionary expenditures made in any of our departments, but to the extent that there are items that can wait until next fiscal year to do so, to put off capital expenditures unless they're absolutely necessary to do so. And, and essentially caution departments that, uh, any dollar we spend this year is gonna be a dollar we don't have to spend next year. To that extent, the departments are really scrutinizing their budgets and hopefully they can come in under, uh, the projected expenditures that we made. And that, that will assist a little bit. Uh, you know, one of the byproducts of the COVID, um, experience is that I suspended all out-of-county travel with a few exceptions, and so there's gonna be some, some savings that we could get. I hope that answers some of your questions.
I suppose it does, although does that mean in the next budget that's coming up that, I mean, you're gonna be recommending specific cuts in services? I mean, at this point, we're talking pretty generally about cuts in services, but in the end, you mean actual jobs that the county is currently doing now that they won't do in the future?
Yeah, so, so my, probably my primary function as CAO and obligation under the county codes to recommend to you a balanced annual budget, which is something, of course, I plan to do. I, I, it's premature to talk about specific cuts in the budget process, yet, although I, at this point, unless, you know, there's a lot of the lessons and caveats to the statements I'm making, but unless there's some sort of, um, relief provided by the state or federal government, which there are discussions about having that, but I, I wouldn't say I'm optimistic about that, even though they're spending trillions of dollars on other programs. Thus far, none of that has found its way down to county government. If it does, that'll change the dynamic. If it doesn't, I don't see a way around making some pretty significant cuts.
I suppose that these are the, please, Eric.
So, I, I know that we've been having some departments have some of their employees that are working from home via telephone or whatever. Or is that providing any savings or a little providing savings going forward in the future? What's your consensus here on that?
Um, a couple of comments about that. Short answer is no, I don't think that's providing any savings. The long answer is, you know, as the board knows, federal government imposed upon, uh, all businesses and local jurisdictions an added benefit to employees, giving, granting additional 12 weeks to everyone centrally. And, which, uh, we're certainly concerned with our employees. We want them to be healthy, we want them to be productive. But what that can have the effect of doing, particularly in some of our 24-hour operations, is that if we grant additional leave to people, that just means we need to bring somebody else on overtime and pay them more. So if they want employees that are leaving, pay somebody else on overtime to come back. So I actually anticipate the portion seeing increase in overtime expenses, for example, for, uh, the 24-hour operations like the jail, handshaking, those sorts of things. As far as savings from people actually operating at home, my, my sense is that, and this isn't a criticism of employees at all, I don't want to take that away, but my sense is that as a general rule, employees are more productive when they're in the workplace, interacting with other employees, with all the equipment at their disposal. And so I, I think we're, we're probably seeing a decrease in efficiency and productivity for those employees that are working at home. We don't have a lot, we actually don't have as many as I thought we'd have requesting work from home. And that's a good thing. And as soon as we get past this episode, it's, it's advisable to bring those people back in. I'm gonna be an advocate for, and I'm gonna, within my power, I'm gonna encourage people to work from the workplace more.
Any other questions? Elizabeth doesn't require answers, so, um, is it public with Nancy?
I would, I would like to speak on this. So I know Richard has a very rosy view, so I, I wanna talk about my view and what I see coming watching cash flow, especially the general fund. And so when you talk about our unfunded employment liability, sometimes I think that gets overstated because no matter what happens, you can't control PERS or the price PERS is going to. I mean, we were super funded for years. When I came to work here, I paid nothing into my retirement, the county paid nothing into their retirements. You don't know where PERS is gonna go. If the market picks up and things get better and PERS could be super funded tomorrow. What we are underfunding is revenue. And you're right, we can't afford the people that we have in public safety and general fund because revenues aren't coming in. And you're gonna see people lose their jobs because we have to cut services. I think Richard's told you, every budget we've come, every year, people need to know that if they get a raise or if we increase this or this, then we're gonna have to do more with less because we don't have the revenues coming in to support that. Diana, before she left, said services are going to have to be cut. The thing is, is that everything goes up in the world, except county revenues. Um, we're paying more back home for office depot, for papers. We're paying more for electricity. We're paying more for everything else. And the only thing that stays stagnant is our revenue. So I hear Richard saying that we are going, you know, maybe run another measure for sales tax, but I think that we have to plan for the worst and hope for the best. And if the people of Laston County feel that we're not spending our money appropriately, then I think we can't do what the city did and wait to see if the sales tax measure happens before we make cuts because then we'll be in that same spot. And it's a really, gonna be a very difficult year because even if the revenues come in, they're not gonna come in on time. I mean, they're going to come in later. And we have a cash flow issue in the summer anyway. If you've ever looked at cash flow and I've given it to you, you will see that in the summer, no money comes in. We're not collecting taxes, we're not collecting really sales taxes. Nothing really happens in the summer. And we really go dry until November first. Well, we're already going dry today because things are already not coming in the way that they're supposed to. And you, and you need to see that. You're going to see general fund and public safety go into the red. And the question is, is what is coming in if it's less? Is it going to pull us out of the hole? And what does that look like if it doesn't? I'm concerned, I have to tell you. And I guess Tommy was saying that Chain Star said that they are going to find PIL this year. Last week, then we didn't know if they were, if they weren't, it hasn't come in yet. And that's huge, and that comes in on usually June 30th. That's like the last day of the fiscal year that we normally have to wait for that payment. And not all of the time we exactly know how much they're going to give us. So you can take Richard's rosy view and you can take mine, not rosy view. And somewhere in the middle is probably exactly what's going to occur. But you guys have to start thinking about the fact that there are going to be revenues coming into this county. And, and no economic project you did, marijuana, whatever, is going to help this fiscal year. Like, we need to ask for, act to increase for fiscal years in the future, whatever. Economic development, bringing in new businesses, working on getting, you know, more private. I think what people need to understand is we have a lot of government entities here that don't pay taxes. I mean, you have both of your, you're all through your prisons, they don't pay taxes. You have your hospital, you have your schools. Our people make really big money, but the places they work at don't pay taxes back to us to help with our infrastructure. So, anyway, that's, that's what I see. And I just want you guys to be aware that when you start seeing fund balances, it's not gonna be in a good, it's not gonna be in an upward positive trend.
Tom?
Good morning. Uh, I just wanted to provide additional information on PIL, my name is, uh, so. Uh, yes, I've been having conversations with Congressman Lamoff's office regarding PIL payment, payment of taxes. That's the federal government's payment to the county for all their lands if they don't pay taxes on. It's approximately $2 million per year, um, and it decreases annually. We're supposedly to receive our $2 million in this year for 2020. Congress has not reauthorized PIL for 2021 and thereafter. There is, um, at least one bill that is being tracked by RCRC, which we're a member of, um, that would extend PIL into the foreseeable future, hopefully for 10 years. But it is a significant portion of our general fund, it's $2 million. And, um, I believe our property tax payment is close to $4 million. So if, uh, PIL is not reauthorized, then Richard is gonna have a challenge presenting the balanced budget.
Kind of state, you name it, pardon?
Yep, I was gonna wait till I got the microphone. First of all, if you want to, guys. Uh, so I think a couple of things that were mentioned today are, you know, you know, um, cuts tend to have to happen. It's just the nature of, you know, running out of money, you don't have money, you have to make cuts. But with that, um, I think there's plenty of evidence to show that even though cuts in services may happen, there's, that, that doesn't necessarily suggest that the necessity for those services doesn't exist. Especially if you talk to the sheriff, you know, if you have any conversation with him, um, obviously, any, any more funding that he could, could get his hands on, you know, would be, uh, more beneficial for his office and, and Fort County in general. But I do think that there is some room for optimism. And I'm gonna share just an anecdotal story that was shared with me by, uh, one of my mentors when I was growing up in Susanville. And he told me about when he, uh, when he was younger and Susanville wasn't as developed as it was, and the winters were notably more harsh than they are nowadays. Uh, you know, his father would hunt in the winter and he would provide, uh, the kills or the, the animals that he hunted to his neighbors in exchange for other services, you know, sort of a part, you know, for shopping shelves or, or ammunition or what have you. So he continued, you know, going out hunting, providing for his neighbors. And I think this story demonstrates the thing that is, um, kind of one of the highlights of being an American, is that Americans are, Americans have that yin-yang inuity. And that if there's a problem that exists out there, there's a solution. And if you give enough people enough time to try and figure it out, you know, there, there is a, a solution to any problem that exists out there. And I think especially in a community, in this community specifically, is very resilient and, uh, very self-reliant. And I think, given the history and, and the way that people are used to operating up here, that even though there is a, a current budget deficit, I believe that there is, or, you know, projected budget deficit or, you know, potential to have, you know, some cuts happen. I think that as a community, given, given their natural resilience and self-reliance, that they're able to, or would be able to, find a solution to generate new revenues or generate new businesses. Um, you know, Richard spoke about, um, the limiting of the use of natural resources in Laston County because in my opinion, the biggest thing that Laston County has to offer is its natural resources. You know, there's relays within a half an hour a year. There's untapped miles of forest that you can go out and explore. And I think all of that is very attractive to, um, people that wanna go out recreating. And maybe we can't use those trees or use the, uh, you know, the land to harvest things and, or log, you know, with, uh, recent federal regulations. But I do think that those natural resources definitely can be utilized for revenue and, and other avenues. You know, not just logging, but there's definitely plenty of opportunities to take advantage of that in the future. So, um, just my take on it. I think there's, there's room for optimism here. And I think that everybody up here is very smart, intelligent people and that, you know, if the tax measure doesn't happen to pass, I, I think that as involved as the community is with the government and as involved as the government is with the community, that there's a potential to find some, uh, adequate solutions that will fit Laston County in the future. Thanks.
I guess I'm confused. If the pie is shrinking, um, and our expenses are going up, um, I don't understand how we're gonna end up with a balanced budget. And again, I come back to why can't the pie grow? Why does it have to shrink? That's my question. And I guess that's the question I ask of the community. If we shrink services, if we shrink, um, incoming revenues, um, then we turn into a ghost town. And while we might still exist as a municipality or a county, um, there'll be many fewer of us here to do it in. And that is, I guess, in the long term, the problem I see. You're discussing shrinking services. The longer that we shrink services, the less reason that there will be for people to come up here. The less that there is to do, the less activity that goes on, the smaller we get. And while there might be some retained value here, there'll be many fewer of us here to enjoy that. And I don't accept that. So I guess that's why I asked for the revenue side. I am an American, um, I believe in growth. And what I don't see here is job growth. What I don't see here is industry growth. What I don't see here is, um, potential. And so that's, that's the problem that I put to the county government. That's the problem that I put to you, Richard, is that we don't have growth. And without growth, that's where you start getting scenarios where we start talking about, I don't know, you say that there's no end, you know, that, that we can continue to shrink, but I think at, at some point, you reach a critical mass, so. Please.
You know, I gotta, uh, say, you know, I've been on the board here, I guess, what, seven and a half years, something like that. And so that means I have voted on seven budgets. And I think I voted yes on two of those budgets. You know, and it's true. Because I like to see a balanced budget. And a lot of times, a balanced budget has been presented. Uh, there's been an entity or a department or somebody else that, that come in with, uh, the crying powell, they need money for this, they need money for that. And we have deficits spent virtually every budget that has been put through. So of those seven... So of those seven, I bet you five of those were deficit spending, and those are the ones I voted no on, even if they were still approved. So, I mean, we gotta look at ourselves as a board of supervisors that approve these budgets that have deficits spent. And so now, like we did this year with the COVID-19, where something's going bad, we'll write back to Nancy's problem, is now we're not going to be on the cash flow, because we have deficits spent down quite a bit since I first took office, took seat up here as a board supervisor. So we've got to look at ourselves too, and we have to make the hard decisions. We haven't made any in years past, and that's part of the reason why we're, where we're at today, but now we, the budget room is gone. And so now we already have to make those hard decisions, there's no more, very little deficit spending left to go to get down. So, you know, anyway, I just wanted to make that, that point, you know, that we've got to take responsibility and work on ourselves as board members. Going forward, we've got to look back at some of our past mistakes, some of the things that we could have done differently in the past, and then we recognize those and try not to make those same mistakes in the future going forward. So that's all I can say.
I had to do this one, the growth issue, and I think it's natural, probably, for people in our situation to look at, you know, why, why is there a lack of growth in our community, our city, our county? And in fact, we have been losing population since the last census, the projections are for Lassen County that continue to lose population moving forward. And it's, you know, there are certainly things probably that we are doing or not doing that are factors in that, but it's, it's a much larger phenomenon than that. The fact is nationally that rural areas are experiencing declines, and that's partially because family size is shrinking. Schools can tell you very clearly how their enrollments are going locally, but also there's just this phenomenon where even though many of us love the rural lifestyle, that's not the, the theme of the day nationally. People are gravitating towards more urban areas, and that is, I'm not making any judgment about whether or not that's good or bad, it's just a factual phenomenon that's going on, it's been impacting us and is going to continue to probably impact us.
Well, and I, I don't want to make a mistake, I think many of the things, for instance, on Thursday, on that Facebook Live, that meeting that they had, your prescriptions for many of these solutions, the points you make, I think it's the same, I know it by heart, so, is that we already have lower fees, lower taxes than other regions, and that is one of the best ways that we can compete, it strikes me. Or at least I'm, I'm not speaking, putting words in your mouth, I hope.
No, in fact, and I, I make this argument often because it's, there's a lot of rhetoric out there that, you know, the county is, or at least I hear, that the county is imposing restriction, we're not allowing this, we're not allowing that. And the fact is, and, you know, I'm in a position to view this from a little bit of experience, Lassen County is, if not the easiest, certainly one of the easiest places in California to do business. We have the lowest sales tax in the state. We have available land, available resources, we have a planning and building process, which is essentially imposing only state minimum requirements. So when, you know, when we hear, whatever, you know, if we were just a little bit easier on business, they come here, I, I resist that a little bit, because I just, and not because of, I guess just because it's not factual, it's just not true. And certainly we want to continue to encourage at a statewide level reductions in those regulations and requirements on our local businesses, and I think this board has been really good at doing that. But it's not fair to say that we're putting businesses at a comparative disadvantage to located Lassen County, it's just simply not.
And also to tie into that, Richard, is the fees associated with building and planning are so much cheaper than 99% of the other counties or two percent.
And part of my point is, and I think we heard that from Nancy too, to a degree, although I'll let you have a moment, if I put words in your mouth, you're going to be careful of that, is that we have to keep the amount of things that we regulate low because we simply can't afford, as a county, to provide that service of regulating them to a degree. So I guess that's, that's part of my point, is I'm not certain that's true. One of the reasons I'm looking for revenue is, what I'm saying is, what businesses want to move to Lassen County? And if the bar that we place on them regulatorily is not very high, then the market itself is keeping those businesses from coming here. If Lassen County, and I agree with you, does not place restrictive, a restrictive regulatory environment, except by the point that the state of California does that to us, then what businesses come here, if they're not coming here, then we have to be very careful about regulating those businesses that choose to come here, because there aren't many of them knocking down our door right now. We know that, because we're losing 2% per year over the last 10 years.
So David, I, I just want to interject something.
Please.
I, when you say Lassen County, that's exactly it. We need business in Lassen County. Yes, what, Susan, City of Susanville is Lassen County, but that's City of Susanville revenues. If we could get a Walmart, if we could get a Home Depot, if we could get a motel, if we could get any industry that was large to actually be in Lassen County.
Right.
That would be huge.
Right.
Outside of the city. And for the city not to be able to annex it, so we continue to get those revenues, that would be huge for this county. And I think when we advocate for business, we need to advocate for business in Lassen County, the unincorporated areas of Lassen County.
If there were going to be businesses in Lassen County, if there was going to be a Walmart in Lassen County, it would be here already.
Well, Skyline hopefully allows for that, because we're opening up all of that. It'd be fabulous to see some business going on the Lassen County side.
If I may speak on that, on that note, Curtis Borl. So just on the, on the business side of it, I don't, I don't disagree with Richard even at all, as far as the professionalism and knowledge and experience of the planning and building department acts. They know the laws and the regulations and the ordinance is, you know, front and back, and you can figure that out if you decide to argue with them about any of it, because they'll push you square real quick. The only thing I would say, and I agree, the fees and that you have to pay to get a business open in Lassen County is much less than you have anywhere else. And maybe you could consider the information I'm giving a little bit anecdotal, because it just relates to my experience specifically. But in my experience, I think some of the things that people, the reasons why people might say it's difficult to open a business in Lassen County is because other places that I've worked at, mostly is in Sacramento, they kind of make it idiot-proof, and they, they give you, they feed you information as a business owner before you get to the next step. And the difference that I've experienced in Lassen County is that, you know, you meet your criteria for a certain step, and then you have to wait a little bit, kind of figure out what's next, you know? And then you have to kind of talk about it a little bit to figure out what that next step really is, you know? And they're really good about identifying it, once you get down to talking about the meat potatoes of the topic, you know, they'll tell you exactly what that looks like later on, you know? But like, for example, in the City of Sacramento, they'll say, okay, you've done this, now this is what you're going to do next, here's that form, this is how you fill it out, get it to us as soon as possible.
So it's customer service?
Customer service, essentially. And I'm not saying, I'm not trying to say that the people that are in the planning and building department don't have good customer service, because they're very dependent when you do, you know, talk to them often, you know? But businesses like to move fast, as fast as they possibly can. I like them to move fast, you know? So it's, and it's not really like they're bad customer service people, you know, or they don't want to talk to you, they do want to talk to you, they're just really busy. I just think that there's a little bit of a difference in like standard operating procedures from like Lassen County planning and building, that Sacramento planning and building department, where Sacramento will say, here's your next step, do this, and as soon as this is done, we will schedule your inspection of your building, you know? Whereas Lassen County planning and building are like, okay, cool, that step's done, now you got to do this next step. And then you say, okay, well, what is that next step supposed, what am I supposed to do? And they're like, well, just kind of, you know, just sort of do something like this. And then you kind of, you give them, you know, something that they ask for, and they're like, well, that's not really what we want, we want it more like this, you know? So it's not really like a definitive streamlined response where you get exactly all the information you need for more trip, you know? Whereas I think the only reason why it's different in someplace like Sacramento is because they have to do it so often to get to talk with people, which, you know, obviously everybody's re-explaining the same thing over and over and over again. So, you know, just my take on it. I don't think, you know, like I said, I've had a great experience working with the planning and building department, and Maury and his staff have done an excellent job of helping me understand some things that I maybe didn't understand quite as well, just by virtue of talking to them often. But I do think, you know, one place where they could be more efficient with their time is, you know, most people don't know what they have to do, and that's why they're dual eyes in planning and building, you know? And I think, and, you know, people tend to get hung up on not wanting to tell business what they, what they have to do, because, you know, we're Americans. But I think in this instance, where they know the laws, they know what people have to do, I think that is a time where they can streamline those pieces and be like, hey, this is, do A, B, C, fill out, you know, section 1, 2, 3, get this back to me, and then, you know, we'll shoot you across. So, you know, take it for what it's worth, appreciate everybody's help all the time. That's just my experience, so.
Well, I suppose we're going to cover this again when we bring up the budget. Does anybody else have a comment or question on this point?
It was a good discussion.
I do, this was prompted by our council, and I mentioned that we were doing this. If, if it is the desire of this board, or this board with the city council, to explore options of placing a sales tax measure on this November's ballot, I just want to point that there are deadlines associated with that, that we probably need to move very swiftly. I'm perfectly willing to pursue that avenue of revenue, if it's this board's direction, but it's, I think it's got to be supported by a whole entity.
And so there's no action requests on this one, I think we can move on to H2, some good news, some new revenue. Mr. Wilcott, do you want to come up with that one? If you were good, you.
Good morning, Steve. I want to bring this to the board. The $14.99 bill was the money we got from the three-quarters of 1% of the sales tax at all the fairs we're in, which is a lot more than what they're giving us. Anyways, it's nice to know that we're going to get $190,000 and $400 as soon as the authorization of the chair to sign it. And it's going to be good for the county, we won't have to use that much more money, but hopefully that'll help a lot. We're looking forward to getting a check.
So does that represent a savings to the general credit?
That was my question, sorry. Well, the board will call it the appropriate funds out of the reserve to fund, I think, that they purchased recently. I have a same question, if this is unanticipated revenue, can it be used to refund that expenditure?
To start with, it could end with a year, this is year in, year out, right? I mean, this, sorry.
The fund is, funding can be used for pretty much everything, you know? It can stay in the budget, that'd be part of the budget, or what you're asking to do. We would be able to use that money to fix that ourselves at that time, so I think that money is available for that kind of stuff.
Well, my question is, is it a one-time, or is it, you know, is it a?
Annual.
It's going to be an annual, because it's, it's in, it's stipulated in the, in the tax law now, so that's.
So we, we haven't received the money yet, and I trust it will, but we haven't yet. I, I propose that what we do is utilize that money to offset next year's, what would be next year's normal contribution to fare, which we've contributed $100,000 to $150,000 in recent years, maybe we can offset that general fund contribution to the fare.
But your wish would be to repay the reserve first and then offset?
It, it would, however, I don't know that this money will come in in time to do that. I'm not sure, I don't know, there's no, there's no time indication of whether it will be received, that I saw.
I was talking with California Department, who had basically the money's in the pocket, and they're just waiting for the okay from your, our board, and I'm not our board, your board supervisor, and that check will be coming out. That's, that's what I got from it, I'm sure the time range will be pretty soon, so.
Money, you're done?
Yep.
So there's two action items on the agenda for action requests, that's number supporting two. Is that it or done?
Is that, is that what you meant?
That's exactly what I meant.
Awesome. Do I have any public comment on the matter? Oh, Mr. Gallagher.
I have a question. So when I read this particular resolution, I'm wondering if you have talked to your leeses about how much they're going to have to pay their employees, and there's any hesitance of them coming and still being a leese for the fare when they have to actually provide these various benefits to their employees in order to obtain this funding? Who's going to enforce that?
If I may, Chairman, I have one question. I also spoke with a gentleman at CDFA about this particular issue and the requirements that are being imposed on the leeses, and the requirement only applies to leeses who have more than 50 employees on grounds in excess of one year, all year long. We don't have it, period.
I, I did read that in this ordinance.
I know.
Yeah, or in this resolution. Could we have a clarification on that?
So we could, if it's a pleasure of the board for me to see that, certainly. That was a representation that was made to me by the individual, and I think Jim would confirm that, Frank Siscony, if I'm saying it right, was the individual he had contact with, and that standard really, and so what you're seeing is an effort through this program to secure kind of wages and terms and conditions of employment benefits, basically. And, and it really is only applicable to some of the larger fairs and some of the larger metropolitan areas, and, and for most counties across the state, it's just simply not applicable. That was the representation.
Like, when I read this, I thought, I wonder how many leeses we're going to lose as a result of that, because I'm sure they're not paying in this manner.
And as Jim and I had this specific conversation, we don't think we're going to have a one. I'll tell you the one that hurt me most was the nursery folks, and, but they're not here all year, and that's a year-in, year-out deal. And so I'm not, um... And so I'm not of the opinion that it affects them at all. And if it had any application, which, which I'm convinced that it is not, I believe the H2, H2A federal program would provide some sort of protection. That'd be my expectation.
So would your, uh, your explanation with that be found in AB 1499 or under the exact words, would those, would that be in there?
Which part?
The, the part where you just said, that's more than 50 employees, year round, etc.
I believe that that is the standard that CDFA has planned this.
I've seen Steve Forth in the last, twice in the last four, five days, and I think he had a concern of him.
Oh, I'm sure he would not let you get out there without expressing his concern.
Right. He was on the spot on this deal, so I don't think it affects him.
Does that monetize the language that we wanna vote for, though? I mean, is that your comment, Chris?
I, I'm just really worried about losing Leeses at the fair because we, I mean, we don't really get enough, we could use as many as we can get. And if we're gonna pass this and, and, uh, it would cause us to lose people that are vendors at the fair, I mean, I'd, I'd be worried about it.
I can add this to my mind. So you'll find on the back page, the back, second to the back page, even if there is a violation, how are they supposed to deal with that from CDFA? And that would contemplate, not a rescission of the funding, that would contemplate a cessation of the program, that would contemplate a request for remedial action planning, uh, that you have an obligation to provide a remedial action plan within a time circuit. And basically, it's, if you're not doing, if there's a violation, what are you gonna do to correct it?
All right. Any other comments? When I call the question, all in favor? I oppose. Motion carried. We will move on. Pardon? I did that. Yeah, I did. I did. I'll remind you, no one reported the line. H3, wait, didn't we have a H3 letter of support here?
I have to recuse myself. So, uh, H3 is simply a letter of support to California Public Utilities Commission regarding the grand anticipation by the Sierra Telecom, uh, regarding increase of broadband broadband.
Comments, questions?
Yes, comment. That is especially important today, you know, for people working at home, like so frustrated on a daily basis, having that connection drop and having to do it. Not only that, and having to increase, you know, the number of neighbors, uh, who initially signed up for in order to move and do work, uh, from home, so.
Cause I think you told me more than.
It, it's super important, Chris, again, this high-speed, uh, back from going, so, you know, people, we talked about how we can get people here, well, there's some unintended consequences that they occur as a result of COVID-19, where people have been working from home and then realize, you know what, I don't have to live in the city, maybe I can go live in my retirement, uh, place in the future, and, and they'll do their work from here instead of from downtown San Francisco. And, but we can't do that without this kind of high-speed internet happen, because they won't, they won't sit there and wait for the connection to restart again, or if they have a slow connection, uh, can't do the work that they need. So I think it's important that we, that we get this, especially in all, all rural counties. I mean, I think all rural counties really in, I'm sure RCRC's been talking about this just like CSAC has. If, and I know this is a, something that's really important, and the president has on his desk as well, so whatever we can do to make this happen, I think we need to fully develop.
Mr. Chairman, we pass this letter.
And they'll move?
Second.
Gallagher, second. Sketching.
Please, thank you. Uh, so where is this, well, where is line number one? Just for general discussion, we could have an anticipated route on, was there, you put this under 10 miles of, of the mountain, 144 of the other?
There were four across highway, the school on Bass Hill, was it, and we weren't on that, so they.
I, I, there's a question, was it, where is this project?
Yeah, that was the question.
This is, uh, being, uh, the work is being done by the state of rural, rural electric or the telecom side of it, and it's gonna be in the south county, south portion of Lassen County. There's also projects that they're doing in other counties, and this letter is specific to the portion of the work that they're gonna be in Lassen, if they get funded.
So, and they can do 110 miles of Lassen County, or?
Yes, that's directly from, uh, the request that came through, um, it's for, this is exactly the language, 110 miles in Lassen County, 144 miles of, um, two homes, and they're gonna serve, I think, 811 households.
And if somebody wanted to join in on this, I mean, how would they go about getting on?
This is the backbone infrastructure that would be owned by the nonprofit, and then people would subscribe, just like they normally do.
You know, cause, uh, you know, it's, it's early in the timing on this because with the cold COVID, you know, I, I'm just gonna speak for Big Gallagher High School up there, where they have, uh, 115 students from K through 12. Um, there's nine families for totally 15 students that do not have any access to internet or cell phone coverage. And so therefore, the school can't provide the webinars or the, you know, whatever to students, because not all of them can do it, so they're, they're, they're left out. And this is just one of those things, the RCRC's been working on, like you say, at CSAC, and it's, uh, it's kind of a disservice to the rural community, whereas the urban people, they can, they can do that, they're already living, their children are getting flourish, whereas we're kind of stuck in the dark age. So, anyway, it's, it's a good service, everybody, even on the, Trump's on the bandwagon, it's just you on the federal side. We have RCRC and, uh, CSAC on the state side, and all.
Public comment? Call the question, all in favor? I oppose. Motion carried. Uh, subject information for the board supervisor, Mr. Egan?
Aye.
Then, uh, move back. We're adjourned. Thank you.